Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, December 9th, and the time is 6:03 PM. And I'd like to call the school committee portion of the Select, the Joint Meeting of the Select Board to order.
And I will call the Select Board portion of the Joint School Committee and Select Board Meeting to order.
Excellent. So, um, welcome. We're glad to have you all here. I'm excited that we're, you know, starting these joint meetings a little earlier rather than waiting until the last minute, so to speak. So our agenda is just kind of high-level items that we sort of all talked about and have been talked about. But just kind of to frame it out, I put some times on there. If we feel like we need to add more time or extend time, I think that's, that's fair game. First up on our agenda is Joint Committee Meetings. And so obviously, our first one here is for Select Board and School Committee. So we'd like to wonder what we are wondering and what your thoughts are on how often we should be having these meetings?
At least quarterly, at minimum. I definitely think if there are, at least the Board, Select Board side of things, if there's pressing issues, then we need to step out of that quarterly and even...
Sure. And I think as budget time gets closer, I can see it being perhaps more frequent. And we can take turns going back and forth between here and Council on Aging, you know, whatever works best. But I do think we'll start to really get some, some solid value out of having these.
I agree.
The next one under this, is there anything else that we need to talk about for frequency of meetings? Do we want to try to get any dates on the calendar since we're all here?
I would suggest, and it's, and I'm suggesting this because it will come out later on in the agenda, that we try to set a meeting for the beginning of March.
Okay.
Because we will have a lot more solid information at that point where right now, we're literally talking so high level that...
Yeah. And we knew that going in.
Right. So March would be the most logical, very beginning of March.
Sure. And the next sort of sub-item of this between Select Board and School Committee is the role of the liaison. I know from my perspective, I really enjoy having Glenn come to the meetings when he's able. But we're wondering if you would like to see a school committee member, it may not be the same person all the time, if you want a school committee member to start attending Select Board meetings? If you think that there's any benefit there, and Glenn and Jen actually both, if you have any thoughts on how you think having, attending our meetings is?
I don't think there's a benefit to having anybody from the School Committee at our meetings unless something's on the agenda that really pertains to the school. I mean, it's not, I mean, our meetings are usually the basics, some of the same things each, each meeting that we have. Unless there's something that will really pertain to the school, I think it would probably be there. But besides that, I don't know. It's up to your committee, but you're kind of wasting your time. Yeah. Because you really can see them, you know, on TV and watch it, I mean, as far as that. Cause I don't know, I don't know what the value is to you to be there first.
I was wondering about that, but how do you feel? Go ahead, Jen, sorry.
Well, I was just wondering if there's anything that for teams, there should be communication between the school and the town before that meeting, if there's something on that agenda.
And I think that's where my role comes in, being liaison to the School Committee. If the Select Board is looking to bring something up that will pertain to the school, involve the school, then that, I would bring that to one of the meetings that I attend to let you know.
Okay.
And then we probably go from there.
I mean, I will say, we are always interested in having you guys sit with us to hear about what's happening. No one ever likes to hear the non-happy parts of it, but that we need to, you know, we'd love, even if you guys, if you, somebody wanted to come once every couple of months and be like, hey, this is what's going on. This is what's exciting. This is what we've done. We want to celebrate the good and we want to fix the bad, but we want to celebrate that good.
I'm so glad to hear you say that.
I think if we're also talking about quarterly meetings, some of that could happen there. And then, like you said, more frequently in budget season. But I think that's another opportunity for us. If it's a quarterly meeting to announce, like you said, some of the things that have been happening in the schools, it's just another, right? We have probably our people who watch every one of our meetings and you have people who watch every one of your meetings and they very well may not watch both. So making sure that we're getting that information out in two places can't hurt.
Anything else on liaison at all?
What would you guys like to see from your liaison? Anything that we're not doing?
I think if, you know, it's been, you've been pretty consistent, like coming on the, the Subcommittee Meetings. And I, I appreciate that input on those meetings. That's usually when we can have more, what's the word I'm trying to say? Conversation. There's more ability to, to talk. But if you see something on the agenda, you're getting the agendas when we felt, send them, right? Do you get them?
I do.
Yeah. So if there's something that you see on a regular business meeting to be able to come, I think that would be appreciated too. Just so that, it's nice to have a representative of Select Board here when we've got things that might be maybe considered more touchy or whatever.
I do enjoy the meetings. They're, I think they are valuable and just to have, whether from the Select Board or as a resident of Ramby, to have participation in some of the recent meetings that we've had. I think it's, I've enjoyed it.
Well, we're glad to have you, for sure.
I think he likes it more than ours.
I also think too, like part of, at least, and then maybe I'm wrong, so this might be more clarifying. Part of the role that I would see liaison is being able to have those conversations that aren't always at meetings, that Jen and Glenn can connect or any school can connect if something comes up, right? And we're in that week between meetings, there might not be something that Glenn or Glenn might not be able to attend one of our meetings or we might not be able to, Select Board, and need a clarification or ask a question. So I think that's something that I've always found helpful in liaisons and other roles. So I don't think there's anything right now that's come up, but I'm just kind of thinking, thinking forward. I don't know how the School Committee members feel.
Well, I was gonna say, I agree with that because I think there hasn't been anything yet. But you would be the person that I would, I would reach out to if there was something. So, anybody have anything else that they would like to see as our liaison? It may not always be Glenn, but...
Is that gonna change yearly as you guys change your roles yearly?
Liaisons change yearly.
Okay.
I mean, if you really like me, I could probably stay on.
So you can keep, but...
We can just put in a little note? Okay. So the next one is Select Board, School Committee, and FinCom. Like a, we've done a couple of these and I think the only people on those at that point were Glenn and I. For the last time, we had all three committees. Were you there, Glenn?
Yeah, I was there.
I'm thinking of some of the heated ones that we...
I was there.
Yeah. So last year on Zoom, I believe.
Yeah. We had a Zoom one last year.
Yeah.
With the old library.
Yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, so we had the Zoom ones. And I, I'm not opposed to doing Zoom if, you know, if that's the way it becomes easier to do that. But I would like to have one in person. I just think there's something nice about having that. But do you guys have, do you have Select Board and FinCom meetings? No?
No.
So, would it be all right if we tried to schedule out between all three?
It's always all right.
Yeah.
No, I can't speak for FinCom to say how frequent
Right.
they would want them, to be honest, until it's budget season. There's really no need to even meet with them.
I feel like it's always budget season for us.
It really is. I mean, we're in budget season right now. So
Right.
You probably have a month and a half, two months where there's no budget. I would say, starting probably with our March meetings, when we'd probably want to start asking them to be part of that.
So I do have a question. How is it that we can get information back and forth to them in a way that it's timely, so that they understand what it is that we're doing? And if they have a question, we can answer them?
I would say that would be emailing John Libera.
Okay. So should we include anyone else in that or just finance?
I guess it would depend on what it exactly is you're trying to convey or look for. If it's a first request, I don't necessarily think that you need to CC anybody else. However, if that request is now three weeks, four weeks out and it's time-sensitive, you might want to CC the Board of Selectmen?
Okay.
And just say, hey, we've been trying to reach out and we're not getting an answer?
Right. Cause I know everybody has deadlines, like they have a deadline to submit their reports. So I'm just trying to think of a way to make it go smoothly for everybody, not just for us, but for everybody. And one of those is, what are our requirements to make it easy for them?
Yeah. I mean, again, that would be a question for FinCom, what would make their job easier?
Yeah. Cause I'm just thinking, we start our budget, we have the information and technically we should be going through because we have to analyze everything to make sure that we can squeeze everything into the revenue that we're getting. So I just want to make sure that we're able to do it in a timely fashion.
Now, why, why couldn't you appoint someone from your committee to attend? Well, not to attend, but almost be like a liaison to the Finance Committee. And ask the Finance Committee to have someone that could be their point person. So those two people can connect on a regular basis. So things do come up, you have a contact you're connecting with, whether it's the two chairs for both committees. There's, you know, it'd be a correspondence, it could be on a weekly or, you know, or bi-weekly or just whenever things come up to reach out. And now that dialogue and that communication is set up there. It's not just reach out when you need answers to something. It's, you know, ongoing. Maybe beneficial.
Yeah. So just to mirror, how do you guys do it? Is it chair to chair, Jen, or is...
No.
No. Is everything flow through Chris and then to you?
Yep. Everything flows through Chris to us. And again, until it's being a budget season, we don't even communicate really. If there's something needed or if there is a matter that they foresee coming up, they will let us know about it. But generally, we don't. We don't get involved with that. We let FinCom do their job because that really is their job. And we deal with what happens.
I'm gonna ask this question and please don't judge me because I, I feel like I know the answer. But reporting-wise, do they report up through you or do they report to Chris who reports to you?
So FinCom is appointed by the Select Board. They do and they don't report to us. Because we're their appointing authority, yes, we have some control over how things happen. But because legally what their role is, we can't interfere. They're tasked with the financial stability of the town, more or less. So we cannot interfere or override that.
So, just another question. So basically, the communication is through the finance person at the Town Department and the FinCom.
Yes.
And then every department goes to the Finance Department at the Town.
What do you mean, every department?
I mean, preparing budget.
Preparing or if there's questions. So, when does it go to the Select Board? At the very end?
No. We actually, I don't know if you saw our last meeting, we have budget discussions set up January 10th and 12th, I think? Where we actually will be meeting with each of the departments to go over their budgets, their budget requests. And then the budgets go, and I believe they go to Chris first, where he looks at them and says, okay. And then they go to Finance Committee, where the Finance Committee looks at them and says, oh, well, it have to... And then it goes back to the beginning and they start over with whatever suggestions were made, cut here, add here, whatever, you've got more that you didn't. So it's, it's that cycle. But no, we actually will see, we will see at the beginning. The other departments' budgets are due December 30th, 31st, whatever, how many days in this month?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. So that's when those budgets, those initial budgets are due. That's not their final.
Right.
But the first draft of their budgets are due then.
But that's not ours?
No.
Yes. I guess our, my question would be like, how, how can we get into that schedule? I mean, December's, I mean, a little early for us. We could certainly have some projections, but I feel like that's what we're trying to get to is...
We can put you into that schedule. We just always assume that...
You don't report to us.
Yes, I understand that.
Departments that budgets report to us.
Totally. What I'm, I guess, I, me personally, I think March, for us to meet with FinCom in March is way too late.
That actually is ahead. So remember when I said I'll address it later on in your agenda? I'll skip to that part.
Okay.
What, when, in talking to Chris and who had talked to FinCom, what we would prefer is that we have a first look at your budget beginning of February, mid-February. And the reason for that is because we know that right now, you guys don't have numbers because House One budget hasn't even been, Governor's budget's not out. There's no way you guys could even make a projection. You could guess, but...
We could. I mean, we could certainly make a pretty, pretty accurate projection. I'm sure, I'm sure we could.
But I don't think it's fair to ask you to do that.
Correct. Yep.
So we would be interested in seeing that first look beginning of February. That way, there's those times to go through and say, okay, what is this? Explain this to us. So no one's dealing with last minute, we don't have this, we need this. Well, I don't understand because you didn't tell us what that was. March, so when I mentioned the March meeting, that would be more of our discussion based on this looks like what it's going to be. There shouldn't be too many changes to this at this point. And that's where we'd all be on the exact same page.
So then that first draft, would you think, and maybe it's not totally fleshed out idea yet, but would it be, would that be School Committee, Select Board, and Finance?
I would say that's probably a good place to start with that.
Okay. So what's the best way, in your opinion, to get that? Would it be for us to provide you some dates? So at least then you have ours and you'd have yours and work with FinCom? Or do you want to get it from FinCom and come back to us?
Your budget?
No, the, just the dates.
Dates for a meeting. I would say, you know, you guys pick out three or four dates that work for you. We'll pick out three or four that work for us. Have FinCom pick out three or four that work for them. And we've got to find something in commonality.
I guess, what would you be looking for from a Select Board budget?
Well...
I don't, I don't know if for necessarily looking for anything. I, I think it's just kind of having that open dialogue, you know, more times than not through that process and not getting to Town Meeting Floor. And then all of that stuff gets flushed out. Just kind of keeping Select Board and FinCom
Information flowing.
Up to date.
So there's no questions. Like when, you'll, you'll know well in advance if there's any reason that we're gonna say anything on Town Floor. Like there, there...
Without having to tune into one of our meetings because we'll have met and talked about it.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like...
Yeah. And my thing is, if you're constantly updated about what we're doing, it's not like it's new or, oh my God, where this come from? Because we're always having a communication on how we're going about the budget. And then if there is any questions, we can answer those way ahead of time.
And I mean, I don't necessarily know that all of our meetings need to be full joint meetings either.
No.
There's nothing that says we can't just...
Chairs, vice chairs.
Chair, right, exactly.
Whatever, or...
Having that informal conversation.
Mostly, Jen, I think we just want to establish a pattern. I think Glenn actually is the one that asked it. That as we're building our budget and as we're going through, it seems like regardless of how, how we're doing it, there's always questions that end up coming out on Town Floor. We didn't know, we didn't understand, we misunderstood, I thought this, you know? I'd rather have those questions done and over so that we really are more of a unified front. Right, wrong, or indifferent, whether you agree with the budget or not, there's not gonna be any kind of massive surprise.
Surprise.
And we'll have had some conversations. And I think, I mean, bottom line, budgets are tense and sticky and yucky regardless. But I think if we can work through that, and even if we're not in 100% agreement with whatever, some of that, for lack of a better word, I'll call it tension, that sort of appears at, on Town Floor can kind of go away because we've had all of these meetings where I feel like we're on the same page. We may not agree, but there's not gonna be any surprises. There, you know, I just, I...
So I guess, your budget is your budget. You can ask for $100 million if you want. I mean, that's, that's your budget. You, just the School Committee is putting together what they feel they need to run the schools. I, ours is maybe for input from us, what you're thinking and stuff like that as far as, you know, cause I, I don't want the misunderstanding that we control your budget and we have any input on your budget because it's your budget, you know? And the Finance Committee comes into it and says, well, whether they agree or not, I think it's appropriate for the town, the town will afford it. And that's where they're coming in to give their, their, their opinion and their thoughts on whether it's good for the town or not good for the town, or it's too much money and how that plays out. I think the good communication is good for us to meet together and work maybe with the Finance Committee and kind of see what they would, they're trying to accomplish completely. I know before in the past, we had some of the meetings, it was more talking about, like, I think we talked about like funding sources, was there, what ways, were there other ways to, we could, you know, obtain more revenue for the schools or for the town to offset some of the costs for the schools and things like that? I know that was some of our previous meetings that we've had, you know, something like maybe three years ago or so, if not longer. So I, I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're meeting and we're talking about things, discussing things that we're moving forward. We're making progress, I guess. So that's, you know, that's like kind of what I go back to, what do you need from us?
I'm looking at it in terms of improving the process.
Yeah, it's a part of the process, I'd say. But I also feel like it is our budget, but it's the biggest part of the Town budget. And so we know it's ours, but it's not a good look or feel if it feels like Select Board doesn't like our budget, you know? It just, or...
Well, the way I look at it is keeping informed so that if there are questions, you can have an answer. And it's also keeping it open where people are communicating and it's, we can explain how we put that budget together and the reason for certain areas where there are some like shortfalls. What are our, how can we resolve that or what can we do?
You guys referred to the $450,000 question.
Well, it's not just that. It's, there are other things on how, like for one, the grants. We have to spend that. We have additional costs to the school. So it's not supposed to be for operating to let the community have a better understanding of how grants are spent. Cause some grants are used for operations in the sense that they're for English learners and stuff. But then you get those one-off grants, for example, COVID. Those have additional costs that the school has to pick up and those grants are to cover those costs. They're not a permanent. It's not like recurring revenue. It's a one-time thing. So to have people, the town and others understand what different parts of those budgets are, not just the operations.
I don't think it's just about us giving information to you all either. I think it's listening to you and Finance Committee, especially now, right? We have the ESTR money, there's ARPA money, there's all these other funding sources coming in that we haven't had, that we haven't had before. So understanding how, you know, the pie might be talking about divvying that up. Or, for example, the ESTR money, we have some money earmarked for a project at the school, but it is dependent on some support from the town too potentially. So how that may play out and whether that money remains earmarked for that or if we do use it for something more operational. And I think we're probably not at a place on December 9th to answer those questions, right? Quite honestly. So as we move forward, I think having those, having set meetings that we can have those conversations. And I think our goal here is that we want to work collaboratively with Select Board and Finance Committee so we can have a smooth budget process. And it might not be perfect. And there's gonna be tension at times like there isn't any budget, but...
It's gonna be perfect.
But understanding that, right? Like ultimately, our goal is that the Town Administrator reads the article at Town Meeting, the Finance Committee supports it, and the Town votes on it like they do every other article, and we move forward to the next article. We might not be there in FY '23 or even FY '24, but ultimately, that's the goal that we've talked about internally. And I think having a more collaborative approach hopefully is one piece of the puzzle and, or one step in getting us there.
No, and I, I agree with that. That's, I think that goes along with when I said, you know, I believe these meetings are part of the process, improving that process. And anything that we can do to shorten Town Meeting is always welcome, especially since it looks like we may just be heading towards a one-day Town Meeting. So we don't want to be there for four to five hours. And having the information out and understood is going to shorten that process. Do I think that we're gonna get there in the next five years? No. I'm not gonna lie to you. I just, I don't see that happening. I can see us making great strides, especially as both sides learn to understand the other side's process. Because that is definitely something...
What? It's all three sides, really.
Right. Well, I don't think I'm ever gonna understand FinCom's side of the process, so I just ignored that entirely. But there's a lot that goes into the school side that we don't understand. And there's a lot that happens on the Town side that there's no way you guys could understand if you have not sat there. So I think by each of us gaining some insight into what the other goes through, it's going to bring us to a place where we can give each other a little more grace.
And that's, and, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to have Novak come in and do the foundational budget piece and kind of very grassroots, how it all comes together. So now we have that and we have it recorded so we can attach it when we're talking about some of this stuff. And I do think it was super helpful. And we had a few people on YouTube and one person came in person. But, you know, I think that's one of the pieces is that how the school budgets are built is completely different than the Town budgets are built. And I think that's one of the biggest pieces that we need to get out there so that there's more understanding unilaterally.
You know, let's be honest, how the Town budget is utilized is vastly different than how the municipal budget is. You guys have more leeway than the Town does. And I think that's something that's not understood, right? And I, I sometimes think that's something that's not understood by us at some points. We're like, I don't get, how are you doing this? Or why are you doing this? You know, I got a crash course last year, Budget Season, from you guys. So I think that crash course would be good for everybody.
Yeah. And it's also a budget built heavily on projections too, right? Or numbers that were 10 months old at that point too, like a combination of those. So, you know, I think Glenn asks like a good question, right? To say, yeah, we could present any budget, but we're also not looking to hamstring the Town in any way. And we, I think I can speak for the seven of us, we're not looking to have more meetings, just to have meetings. We want to make... to make sure that they're purposeful, that they're useful and.
Now I'm offended. I thought you liked meetings.
I'm happy to have a meeting as long as there's purpose to it certainly. But no, I it like, I'm not looking to meet with, and I don't think the school committee is looking to meet with the select board every other week through the budget season or finance committee. We just want to make sure that you understand, finance committee understands that, like, we do want to be collaborative. We want to be transparent. We want to answer questions. Um, people might not always like the answers, but we're open to doing that and, you know, really trying to be proactive and putting our best foot forward.
Steve, I I can please, no one take this the wrong way. But the information that you provide, you need to provide that to the residents. Those are the people, and you know this, it's those are the people that are gonna vote on a budget. When the select board gets up there, we're just three votes as residents for the town. So that's, I mean, I I hear what you're saying as far as and some people talk about when you get to town meeting and, you know, some of the information, some of the questions that are coming up. Those are gonna come up unless all that information is provided to the 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 town, the residents beforehand.
Agree. And I think literally you have three votes, but figuratively, your votes carry more weight than other votes. People look to the select board when you're voting, right? I've sat in the back, I've sat in the back and I've watched it. So I think literally it's through votes, yes.
People vote with their wallet and how they feel, what is important to them. They don't, uh, just my opinion, that's it. They don't care what one second how he votes.
Well, that's a hundred percent true. And but part of the, that's why we're trying to do these is the way people are going to get their information is people might be more inclined to watch the select board meeting or to watch a FinCom meeting. And if so, one of those meetings is a joint meeting where we're here and we're presenting budget and we're talking about budget. That's how their information is going to get out. I mean, we do public forums, we do question and answers, we're sending out documents, and we get maybe three or four people. So the information is offered a lot, like a lot, a lot. And we we're looking in a different avenue, a different way to try to present that information. And so Stephen and I and Adam, the three of us actually were like, the way we're really gonna get it is if we can present it in front of select board, present it in front of FinCom, have some of those questions, have some of that dialogue, because we're gonna reach different people that way. You know, we're I don't know how else to be able to present stuff, because I don't think anyone's gonna want us to pay for a mailer to send to everybody. Um, we put stuff on the but on our website, we have links to stuff. But I don't know that that's that's still only a a fractional amount of town because not everyone is tech savvy, right? So that's where we're trying to trying to look at it differently. And that's sort of where we're going with this is if we start having these joint meetings where we can have open dialogue and discussion about the budget, that's another avenue for people to get the information.
It's increasing the narrative. Same, you know, there's five select board members, I believe, uh, not select board, um, finance committee. So like, you know, there are five people that they talk to other people too. It just increases the narrative of what's kind of happening and going on.
So I do have a question. Is there a way that we can get like a link on the Grammy Town website?
Would be nice.
For the school department? Like if they have any questions or because if everybody goes to the town website, is there something that they can click on there?
We definitely have the the school committee, all the school committee members on there and all the contact information.
Well, even just like a link to the schools because it's one of, it is one of the town's department schools, but it's not listed on the website.
No, it's not. You've seen our website.
I think that'd be, I mean, there's there's no reason why it can't be. You put a hyperlink on it.
Yeah, they would just be like, it should be. All the departments, but not us.
We've been talking about hyperlinks. But I think I I I think something Jen and and Adam, you've been on around for the past several years. And I think for two of yous kind of look at what have been the struggles over the past several years where you think that's where the improvement needs to happen. You know, what 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 were the things that just said, geez, not again, or this or that? You know, and and that that part, if there's something that we can help you out with that as far as communication, working with the town on the town side.
I think honestly, this is the biggest first step is just being able to be candid and developing the relationship, you know? I know that um Emery started, it was his idea for the liaisons and we carried it on. And I think it's helping us make strides. And, you know, we've got Stephen now. And so that's a different person. So anything that may have been in the past with a previous superintendent should lay there. Like we can't hold present accountable for the past.
I'm not, I'm not saying superintendent wise. I'm saying what what you've seen, where challenges were for the two of you. Not to do with the superintendent, but with your budget, where what do you think some of the the struggles were throughout the past years? And some years during, like the budget went through no problems.
Yeah, some years. So the years that we've had problems, the biggest issue I I perceived, um, so it's my reality was I felt that no matter what we said or how we answered the question, FinCom was was not supportive or or closed off. I don't want to say it, but I don't want to say it in a negative way, but I felt like our hardest obstacle was FinCom.
They just did, they didn't agree with you.
Right. But and and it's okay to disagree. But I think at some point, you still have to listen to the facts, even if you don't if you don't agree with them. And you can't, facts are facts. There you can't dispute a fact. And you can't put a negative spin on on a fact. But I think some of the.
So my takeaway from that is I I don't think they fully understand how the school department's budget works. And there the school department analyzes every year because they have to to squeeze in their expenses into a revenue that's declining. So I'm looking at it from a fin- financial side as how can we get all this done with staying within our budget and still having those increases that are gonna happen every year, whether it's salaries or keeping the lights on. Those are automatic increases. And right.
The the school budget's different than a lot of the other budgets because of the formula that you use to kind of get that baseline for your budget.
And it's not. It's a state and you know.
And I don't think anybody understands how that formula works.
Yes. And and so that's why we had that. But one of the things, what I was trying to say is that, you know, we we hear a lot that we haven't presented or we haven't provided the correct budget. Like, you you know, we get held accountable for not presenting a line item budget. And like you've said already, our budget works differently. It for us. So when those kinds of things come out, that to me is where we get hung up because we immediately get defensive. And it's like, we we've presented you the numbers that were required to to provide to you. And it looks and feels differently, but that should be okay because it's what we're supposed to do. Like we don't, our budget doesn't live in a line item way that some of the other ones do.
I think back to Glenn's point, asking us, particularly me and Jen, like what we've seen over the the, you know, what have been some obstacles over the last few years. And I think the communication piece that we're trying to address is the biggest part of it. And it's difficult between three committees to try to get everybody on board at the same time and educate everybody. And I've said this and 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 we've all agreed in plenty of school committee meetings, like we need to take some responsibility in not educating uh select board, finance committee, and the community as as to what goes into our budget. We we've even before I've been here, we just expected to go to town floor and and people voted on the on the budget and and that was it. And we didn't hear from anybody until another year later, right? We kind of just fell into that cycle and and if it worked, it worked. If not, you know, we'll do that, do. But I think a lot of the responsibility falls on us to educate everybody on not necessarily how the formula works because it is pretty complicated. I I deal with it on a day-to-day monthly basis. It it's complicated, like Tracy came the other night and like, there were some things where I was like, wow, that slow down for a second because like, if you can't understand it, the public's not gonna understand it, right? So but not wasting a lot of time on that, but just educating the public exactly what goes in and what our thought process is on how we build the budget. And at the end of the day, I think if the three of us, the three committees get together and people in the community can see that we're on this united front, we may disagree about some aspects, but at the end of the day, we can all agree on how we got to something. They're more inclined to go to town meeting and support the school's budget, even though they might not have a full understanding on what it is. So I think that the biggest key for us, but at least for me in the last few years, is making sure we communicate more clearly, properly, timely, a- and that we are, again, we can certainly disagree, but it but if we can agree to disagree on some things, people will be more supportive of that, knowing that we've kind of you know, had these conversations and we're not waiting to town meeting floor to point the finger because that doesn't do that doesn't do anything for anybody. It it that's that's not the way we should operate. And again, we should take some of that responsibility. Um, so I think that's for me, that's the biggest takeaway over the last few years is is increasing that communication. Having more.
You're so eloquent. I'm trying to provide the examples and you're saying what I've been trying.
Yeah, just 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 providing the town people with more opportunities during public comment or a public forum to, and we say this, and I I don't think, at least on my part, like, we don't say this just to say it, like come hammer us with questions during public comment or a public forum. Like, we'd love to hear that. And it it just, it gets frustrating because we don't get that interaction. So we need to kind of assume what people may be thinking and and give them that information. So I I just think the communication is the biggest part. Um, and I think that's what we're really trying to really focus in on this year. Like Steve said, it's not going to be a one-year or two-year, it could be a three or five-year thing before the process really starts to work. Um, but I think that's, this is the biggest step is is communicating and and educating the the public.
What would you guys like to see from us to do different?
I think you gotta, what get back to what you just said, it's great for communication. And it's the listening public who's gonna agree. And that's all those parents here are gonna be listening to this. The other voters here in town, are they gonna listen to that? How do we approach it? Nick, what we had at the last town meeting where Jen had a little problem getting something in there. It was taken as a surprise and everybody, where where this all come from? If that's eliminated, like I talked to Steve about this, I said, if we eliminate that issue and what you're heading at is what I'm thinking about, I don't think you'll have a big shock when you come to the town meeting. My part of getting your communication going, but this to get the public and join in on it is key.
I'm like really just not doing a great job tonight. Everyone's absorbing what I'm trying to say. That's really what we're trying to.
Well, then you are doing a good job. Yeah, everybody's absorbing what you're saying.
What I'm trying to get out there is that really that's the point is we need to figure out a way.
How to reach all the voters.
How to how to reach people so that when the same hundred and thirty-six people show up to town floor, there, it doesn't appear that there's a shock, you know? Whether we agree or not, there's nothing that we're going to have there that's going to be presented, that's going to be a shock to anyone that sits on one of the committees and people that have been following us, right? So and I think that is like, Adam, thank you for saying that because we've talked about it is we need to do a better job communicating and educating people, but that's gonna start with us having more interactions with different groups of people because we have like Stephen has said, the same people that watch our meetings and the same people that watch your meetings. So we need to do like an NBC crossover.
People that watch more than one show.
You're welcome.
That was awesome.
I really don't know what she's saying.
Oh, my Lord.
She's just saying, right, she can't get across, so it was there.
Oh, now I got you. I'm tired. It's been a long day. The town still does all calls when there's like town meetings and or not really anymore either.
No, there's town meetings. They 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 send out the public announcers.
Okay, because something I just thought of too is, you know, we just had that meeting with Tracy and I drove around town with my son in tow and hanging up signs everywhere and and still had a few people on YouTube I was so excited about. Um, and was able to have some conversations with the community, which was good too, at the locations that I was at. But at the same time, I start thinking of like, you know, what are ways that you have found a better way to engage the community? Any tips, any pointers? Right. It would, like when we had a meeting like that with Tracy, should we have reached out to you guys and be like, what do you think about putting out a town all call to like, get people to show up to this Tracy meeting? Or, you know, kind of going forward so that we're showing an alliance of communication?
So here is my suggestion. As far as you talk about trying to reach people and get people to come and see and ask questions in regards to, you know, the budget and things like that. Somehow have a a a public budget meeting. And have it so you can um almost like a Zoom meeting. And the people, people can be at home on the computers or on the phone watching it, but also ask questions. They don't have to make the way down to the school to see what's what it's all about, what's going on. They can do it right from their home. They want to tune in for a half an hour. They want to tune in for ten minutes. They want to ask the question and after you answer the question, they're done or what have you. So that might be something to do. Then if you if you if you're trying to reach out to a broader amount of people or a greater amount of people, that may be one way to do it. Now you're not just getting the people that would come down, but you're also reaching the people who may not be able to come down, but also want to hear what's being said and have the ability to um ask questions at the same time.
We have those built into our budget calendar for um FY twenty-three, you know, not just a public hearing where there's really limited or no interaction between us and the public when it comes to the budget, but having multiple public forums where we can, you know, the seven of us could sit in this setting and just say, just ask us any question. And then we can take that information and go back and say, okay, like, you know, a lot of people think this is important. So we we might want to reshift our focus to this, but I think the frustrating part in the past, and even last week or whenever it was, was Tracy, is that we do all this work. We sent out an invitation. We we were all excited for it and then we show up and and no one showed up. And I think in the past, we've said, you know what?
One person.
Yes.
Let's give her credit.
And in the past, in the past, we said, you know what? Like, we're done. We're we'll just do things our way and and maybe it'll get shaken out on town meeting floor or whatever. But I I think our approach now is we just got to keep going. We have to keep pushing and flooding the public with information. At some point, it'll get out there. Again, it might not be this year. It might not be next year. It could be three to five years from now, but we can't just settle because we've done things that way in the past. Like, we need to rethink this whole process within the school department and within how our three committees um look at the process.
And we've said it starts in our own backyard, like better information to our staff, more open about the budget process with our staff, like teachers, administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, all of those people, not just those who live in town, but all of them. So they understand the process. And that's something we built into our calendar for this year as well. Um, you know, and we've said it on here before that we'll take our show on the road to anyone who will have us. So, I mean, we're really like tonight, high level, but as we get closer, you know, we might be ten of thirteen people in town who are thinking about the budget on December ninth, right? But as we get closer, there's gonna be more and more and more people. So trying like, we've kind of had this, at least I've had this like funnel approach, right? Like, we're in the big part and like, we're gonna start narrowing down as we get closer to May, June. Um, and being available to have those meetings in March, April, May with people. Um, be it a formal Q and A or something informal that we see somebody at, you know, Dino Fest is in September, but something like that where you're out in the community and having these conversations. So we have this common language and understanding of where we're going with it.
I really think of ways now to start doing that. I wouldn't look at the following year or the year after. The time is really is the focus on now.
I think normalizing, you know, you know, talking about this will
Yeah.
greatly improve.
Yeah. But again, the only people that I know about it are the people that are watching the meeting, you know, and it's really start getting that information out there. Uh, if like I said, so if you can do something like that, and not even where people have to be on the Zoom call or something like that to ask questions. Maybe they can just text a question in. And, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to know who it is or know who it's coming from or, you know, because sometimes people don't want to ask that question when they. because sometimes people don't want to ask that question when they, they're on camera or something like that. You know, and start getting that information out there now. If you start, if you know, um, March fifth or March sixth, you're gonna be doing a meeting, maybe that information starts going out to the, with home of this, with the, with the students. And it's, you know, it's, so they're being notified, the parents, we know, they just let you know, this is coming up.
And speaking as a parent, digital backpack doesn't work.
You can only, you-
It's gotta be paper.
You can try as hard as you want and put as much effort into it. The people are only gonna take what they're gonna take out of it. For the people that are interested in it are gonna take what they want out of it. But at the end of the day, you can stand up and say, we tried, we did this, we did this, we did this. I understand you didn't get this information, but we tried all these different avenues to get that information out to people. So it's kind of like, you know, I hear what people are saying, but reality is, we tried. And you can't fault someone that they tried all these different avenues to get the information out there, and the people just aren't getting it. And most of the time, the people who are gonna get the information are the people that want it.
Right, and so what you just said is one of the biggest things is that they won't be able to, the collective they, won't be able to say, they're, they didn't try to get it, because you will have all been invited to some of these meetings. You will have seen the information, you'll know that we've been trying. So that cuts down, in my mind, we, you know, it doesn't hold as much truth when people, well, I didn't know or whatever. When you know, now we were connecting with you in a way, having that communication, and we're trying to publish it, and we're coming with you to say, hey, what other things can we do? When someone comes up and says, we didn't know about this, this is a surprise, it's, it's almost like you could then validate that, well, no, we know that they've been trying to put some of this out. And, you know, can we get some suggestions on how we could meet people better? But it validates what we've been trying to do as well, because now we're including you guys in that, and we want to work with you, like Stephen said a number of times, and it's all about collaboration. So if we're, if we're doing this in a way where we're, we're talking to you and working with you and working with FinCom, it takes away that air, that aura of like, well, they're just doing this in a vacuum. Well, no, because we really are, we're part of the town. So we want to get that part across, that, you know, we're, we're trying to get that way.
And I think that's how it's being taken. Um, I mean, I know, speaking for this board, I don't think we've ever thought that those decisions were being made in a vacuum. Um, I, I can't speak for past boards.
Right. Nor would I want you to.
Well, sometimes I might like to. You know, hindsight's always twenty, twenty.
Always twenty, twenty.
I think, you guys, it, it's great to reach out people, but think of the people who show up at the town meetings. When there's a school issue on it, you get them all there. When it's done and voted on, where do people go? There's other people who there, you gotta, I always go back to the thing I remember, K-I-S-S, keep it simple. You gotta reach out to people who aren't tech savvy, have meetings with them. The elderly is the main ones who don't mind it. Some of them don't turn on the computer.
Yeah.
See, and their voters.
How do you all, um, sort of conquer that? Because you guys have information that needs to get up to them, so how do you try to connect with that population?
That populate, that, I would say that subset of population is the same subset that watches our meetings on GCAM. It is that demographic. Um, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, there's not much that we do in the way of outreach, and that's actually bad on us. Um, Glenn had made a couple of suggestions to you guys, and I'm thinking, well, why aren't we taking those suggestions? You know, why aren't we asking for that feedback more than we are during citizen participation? Why aren't we? So that's something that I'm gonna actually start to think about, why aren't we?
But I always think of, i- if people, if people have questions for you, they're gonna get to you. I know people have reached out to me, people have reached out to Jen, people have reached out to Rich. So if people have questions about some things that are going on in the town, something like we're talking about, they're gonna reach out to one of the members and ask that question. And, and why? Because that-
Frequently.
That, that, because that means that, whatever that question may be, that means something, they want the answer to it. And that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, if you have thirty people that ask you questions about your, the budget, those are thirty people that want to know. And then that town meeting has twenty people that weren't, didn't listen to any meetings, and they raise their hand. I get that, I understand that, but reality is, we still have to explain it to them at that time as well, because it doesn't matter why they didn't get their information, they're still entitled to the information until a need to explain it to them. Just if, if they're at all the other meetings or missed it, so.
Sure.
It's kind of what Rich was saying with his little, uh, yes.
And I will-
It's that piece.
Right, I will say, during last year's budget season, I think there was a number of times I looked at him and I said, could we do school budget for dummies? Because I don't know what you just said, and you've said it three different ways, and I still-
I never know what Adam says.
Don't know what, Adam, I don't know what you just said. So I think not only the information that's being shared, but how and the wording that's being used is definitely a big factor, because I think there was one time, I'm like, okay, Adam, I, I don't know. Like, I, I don't, I don't know what you're asking for me. Um, and you've asked me three times and I still don't get it, so figure it out. And that was, and I didn't want to do it, but when that communication piece, we lost that. And we later on did figure it out, but I shut down. My brain was not accepting anymore, because I tried three times and couldn't.
And you see the glaze come in there, right?
Right. Um, so I think the delivery method is something that really needs to be bought out. Um, getting that information, and that stands for us as well. Getting that information out is great, but if the delivery's not there, it's not gonna be received. That static is gonna be too overpowering.
That's the point I was making earlier, where the school's budget differs from other town budgets and how it's prepared and, and the information that goes into it versus another town budget. The town budgets can look at what they have for expenses, what they have for payroll, what the, the needs are for equipment and, and things like that. And at the end of the day, that's, okay, this is what we're gonna need to operate for the next fiscal year. Well, that's not as simple as that, but that's reality where, like I said, a lot of different things come into the school budget, as far as the formula, what, you know, what, how much money you get for a student? And, well, we need this, well, how about this, how about bussing, how about this? So there's a lot of different equations that come in that, that really aren't in other budgets. And as Jen said, you know, it is, it is confusing, because if you don't, it takes a while to kind of understand it. And, I mean, I've been around for a little bit, and it's, it's confusing. You think you understand it, and you understand what's, what's happening. I understand the, the concept and the general information that goes into it and how you come up with your, your figure, and that's kind of like, okay, this is what we, bottom line, what we could operate on if we have to, but the reality is, we can't operate on that, because we want A, B, and C for our students. So we need this to go along with that to make it work. Is that how your budget works out? Just like that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I disagree a little bit. I, I understand the, the formulas is very complicated and totally different than the town, but at the end of the day, we want to get to the same places any other town department. Like, we have projections, expenses. So I guess our question's always been like, how come we're not included in that process? Because even though the formula's different and how we get our money and our revenue is generated, we still should be part of the process to some extent as to other town departments, because at the end of the day, the end goal is all the same.
So when the town reports, the school's part of that whole budget? When somebody's looking at the town budget? So they're not just looking at a piece of it and then the school. It's the town, when someone looks at Grammy, it's the entire town budget.
I, I see what you're saying there. Um, and to your question point, um, as to why you're not included in that, um, I think a great deal of it has to do with legality. So legally, the town, the town cannot do anything about your budget. The voters can vote your budget, but the town cannot do anything about that. Um, and it is limitations of the Education Reform Act. We are limited in how we, what participation we could have. Um, to say we could have, we could not have informal conversations is not outside the realm of possibility. Of course, we can do that, but to be seen to influence, that's something that we cannot do.
Yeah, so I, if it came off the way, that's not what I was, that's not what I was intending. I, I was, the point I was trying to make is that we are a town department. At the end of the day, we are a town-
You are the biggest town department.
We are a separate one, because we have our own committee, but we are a town department, and our, our thought has always been, we should, to some extent, follow the same process during the budget season as legally is allowed. Um, that, that's kind of always been like, it, it's not an accusation, like you guys do it on purpose or you're not, we've just always said, like, how come we're not part of that process? And what can we do to be a part of, part of that process? So we are all on the same page. It gets back to just being on the same page at the, at the end of the day. So we're, we're, again, we're gonna agree on some things and disagree on some things, but, but we want to be a part of that process to whatever extent possible.
So, speaking from what I've understood historically, um, the school department, being our largest department, is not part of that process, because they never wanted to be. Um, and it came down to, we'd like your advice, what would you like us to do? The town would give their advice. We don't want to take that advice, we're gonna do what we want to do. And I think that's when communication started to break down. Um, I think a genuine want to be a part of that process is a huge step. Um, and unfortunately, again, we're not always going to agree. There's gonna be times when FinCom and the town say, yeah, I see what you want, but where's the money coming from? And then, no one wants to be, and I'm gonna be very unpopular for saying this, but no one wants to be guilt tripped, well, what teachers do we cut this time? We don't want that responsibility. That's not our responsibility. I hate to say it, that's yours.
Yeah.
And I want you to keep it, because I don't want to ever have to make those decisions. Um, and I'm glad that you guys are willing to take that responsibility on, because that is a tough responsibility.
Well, first of all, we're not talking about funding. Let's just, no, no, we are not.
Anyone?
No, there are no budget cuts being planned, because there is no budget right now. Um, so where I'm going with that is, um, I lost my entire train of thought.
Sorry.
It's okay.
You're saying that it's, um, the responsibility is not, um, not yours.
Right, uh, so because we can't take responsibility for a budget, we can't take responsibility for having input on the budget. As much as I would love to give input on the budget.
See, and in my view, I don't think, and then maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think that us jointly being part of a process is that we're asking for your opinions or asking for your feedback, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's just an opportunity to share. But it's an opportunity to share, like, this is where we're at right now, this is what it's looking like. Do you have any questions regarding what we're presenting to you to clarify? But we're not asking you to be like, okay, you should cut this.
Which makes you not part of our process.
Right.
Because the way our process works is, the police department brings us a budget. We look at it and we say, are you out of your mind?
Right.
Can't do that. We don't have that.
So I think it's, for me, it's informative, is our intention, not reflective.
So in, and I think we are totally all for the information piece of that.
But, and that's, but-
Yeah, baby, you're gonna answer it. Go ahead.
No, it, it just goes back to what I was saying earlier. We're three votes. That's what I, that we have, we're just a select board when it talks, when it comes to governing things that have to do with town that are board overseas. But besides that, we're just three votes. The, the school, then, kind of what Jen was talking, I talked about earlier, just the, the whole process, why you're not part of it? Because you are the elected officials for that process. We are not. The, the, the town has elected the school committee to do that process.
But I think it brings in FinCom, who makes a recommendation, so there's that piece.
They make the recommendation for all the budgets.
Right.
Whether it's the police, fire department, uh, DPW.
So they sit down at your department meeting, FinCom.
No.
They're recommending, the finance committee will look at it, recommend it, that we believe this is a good budget for the town. Yes, we think that's appropriate for the town, the town can afford it. No, we don't think the town should be doing this, it's costing town too much money, there's gonna be problems down the road. That's where the finance committee comes in. They're giving their, their information to the town based on what they feel is appropriate for the town, how the town could survive, so the town's not overspending their money.
So here's my thought. Um, if those departments go together and they give their, their budgets, and they discuss how it's gonna be. Now, as an individual, as a town resident, I want to know what the whole budget looks like. But if I'm only looking at a few departments, but the biggest department is not included in that until, at the very end. So as a person who's trying to analyze and make a fin, a financial decision on where the town is headed, we're missing the biggest piece. So if we can provide that information as early as we can, based on the information that we're getting from the state, I think a formal decision or informal decision could be made earlier based on the entire budget instead of just pieces of it.
Well, historically, you guys are a part of that process.
But by the time we get in there, there's already, the other departments have already provided that information way ahead of-
And that unfortunately is the nature of the beast.
But what we're asking is to do it earlier rather than later.
Right, well, the, the nature of the beast is, our departments, the other town departments generally have a two percent increase. So you take last year's budget, yeah, two percent, that's really much you get. Um, your budget doesn't work that way. So when they're presenting their budget, they're presenting it based on that two percent increase. When you guys are presenting your budget, you're presenting it on basically what is net school spending and all of that, which we won't even have those numbers until February, March.
Well, we'll have preliminary-
Preliminary, correct, but we won't have-
And they don't usually change much between January and-
They shouldn't, um, especially now, they shouldn't, but-
I, I, I don't know if I'm not, missing, seeing it correctly. There's no race for the money.
No, no.
There's not like a million dollars and, okay, because they got their budget, they got their budget, that money's kind of spoken for.
No, that's not, that is not what I mean at all.
No, what I, what I took, Jen, is seeing is that, you know, people listening to our meetings are seeing the police budget and how we're dealing with that, but they're not, they're seeing those little individual pieces, and then we have half a pie still sitting on the table that no one hears until, usually you guys, what, come to us?
It's, last year was, no, it was later.
Last year was late.
Can't really use that.
Those people need to watch your meetings.
But I want to say, it's usually March eighth, end of March, beginning of April.
I think by saying we're gonna have a February meeting is a good start, and I don't want to stop the discussion, but I think, like, if we go back to the agenda, we had backwards planning from town meeting, and I could be wrong, because I wasn't involved in it in the same way that Jen and Adam and even the school committee were last year. But I think, like, that's what we're talking about in terms of process. I think last year, we were looking for, what are the deadlines? When do you need X? When do you need Y? When it, and I feel like the perception on this end was, we're asking these questions, but we're not getting a clear answer, we don't know when to get this-
There is no clear answer.
Okay, so like, that was my question, like, once town meeting is set, how can we backwards plan from that, so we know when finance committee needs everything they need, when select board gets out, when we need to have any um, literature for town meeting to the moderator, like, those types of things? It would be helpful, I think, if we had that as soon as possible, so we could plan accordingly. And that's what I, my interpretation of like, the process.
And that answer is so muddy, it will never become clear.
Why?
Um, because there are no set dates for that.
Well, isn't a town meeting always like the first Saturday and-
No, town meeting is the second Monday of May.
Oh, right, it was, it's-
The last two years, it has been off because of, so this year, town meeting is scheduled for May ninth, twenty twenty-two, next year.
Certain dates that Adam had to have certain-
Correct, um, correct, but that is on that school side, that's not town part of it.
Well, you kind of just answered or kind of just highlighted one of the things. So town meeting's planned for May ninth, but that's probably the first time we've heard of that date, right? So that's, that's one of those things, so like-
Well, no, it's not. We, the select board has not said it is May ninth.
Okay.
Our, our bylaw states that it is the second Monday of May, so if you look at- By law states that it is the second Monday of May, so if you look at the calendar, the second Monday of May is. Town moderator could say, no, we're doing it in June, we're doing it in July, we don't know. Um, but if we go by town bylaw, we've got that Monday. Which means. On the school side, we know that you would have to have your presentation so many days, your public presentation so many days prior. Your presentation that you traditionally do at the select board so many days prior. It has to be posted so many days. So that's where we work back and that date is a floating date.
When you guys typically set that date?
When do we typically set? Time meeting? We don't. When do we typically formalize it?
Yeah, well, that's setting it in my mind.
Oh, with all the articles and.
So that's where, that's, I think we're speaking the same language, but we're like, this is where I feel like we have communication barriers. Like you, you just said, you know, in April. That you're gonna do that and that's where we run into trouble is because that April date hasn't, the communication piece hasn't gotten to us and we're always, we're always like. Behind the April, we're always late with getting stuff. Because there, that's where the breakdown is. So that's what Steven was saying is that, you know, if we should shoot for the May ninth. Date, cuz you also referred uh, that we might only have one town meeting, everything on on the Monday, the May ninth or whatever date. It is whatever the town meeting date is. We can then work backwards cuz it wouldn't wouldn't necessarily be any earlier than that day.
It can never be earlier.
So if we were to backwards plan from May ninth, we would then hit all of the appropriate timelines. So then if it's, you know, we have to post our articles fourteen days, I think is one of, you know. You know, fourteen days, twenty seven minutes and thirty seven seconds, okay, we'll do, you know, we can count backwards and then if we know that we have to. Have a meeting with FinCom. Thirty seven hours before that, we can, you know, we can plan backwards. So that to me is like one of the best pieces of information that we got. If we're, I mean, I I know the town by law that I um, that that day. And we plan backwards from that. Then, you know, we shouldn't ever be in a position where we're late because we can.
Are you waiting to hear from the state and what they're? The money that you're getting from the state?
Yeah, I mean, the governor's budget, the preliminary comes out that. Fourth Wednesday of January, which this year is the twenty sixth, Wednesday, the twenty sixth is, it should come out. Um, if it's gonna be later than that, we'll we'll know soon. Again, we can build some pretty accurate projections up until that point, but really. We don't start really getting into it until we have those preliminary preliminary numbers and typically they don't change much from. His version to the final uh, approval. So. January twenty sixth this year, that that Wednesday will be when we get.
I feel like we've kind of covered.
Yeah, we jumped around.
Department head meetings, we've touched on. I feel like um. Backwards planning, I don't know if there's anything else that.
No, I think. That was good information, like if we plan for May ninth, to your point, we can't be late. Cuz that's the earliest town meeting can be, so if we plan everything back from.
I wanna caution, May ninth is only this year.
It'll be the second.
I just, I just don't want anybody to say May ninth and have that date.
So this is the closest, the second closest, so. Basically, if we plan from May eighth backwards, we can never be late.
And should it be pushed out for whatever reason? Then you're still ahead of the game, actually.
So I guess that's where those dates then um, become important is. To help us fill in the blank that, you know, what are all of those backwards dates that we need to make sure that we get? So we have to get articles um finalized, we have to meet with you, we have to get stuff in front of Chris, we have to meet with FinCom. So I'd like to see what. I think Adam has a good idea of what all of those are and I do too from being um, on the finance committee now. But I would like your perspective on on what those dates are and it's not something I'm asking you to say right now, but. If we could kind of iron those out, if you guys were to look at your calendar.
Approximate dates that you.
Two weeks for articles uh, for, because everything has to be posted, you know, two weeks in advance or three weeks in advance or whatever it is.
Whatever the time is.
Um, whatever the the time date is and then, you know, you guys have a final say on this, that or the other thing. So then we can backwards plan to make sure that we have our public forums in the right amount of time, that we have um, you know, the public hearings that we have to do when we vote on stuff. That we can communicate with the teachers, with the community, with the community, with you guys, with FinCom, so we can plan out. All those, just like what, if you were to say. At your next meeting that this is the date that you're gonna go for, then you know all of those other dates, how that all falls in. If you could get us that so we can plan for that earliest. You know, that it couldn't be no um, no earlier than that date. And that's gonna be, I think, one of the biggest pieces of forward progress that we'll make.
Well, with that said, so as Jen said, that's the earliest that it could be, it could be later depending on.
Right, but if we always shoot for that by law date. And go through, and I just wanna make sure that we have what all of those itemized steps are as you see it with, because. Regardless of how FinCom or anything else, you guys, you have, you're sort of in control of all of that.
We control the warrant.
Right, so if you know all of those dates, then we can then be like, okay. Not yet.
We don't, we we know when it, we what it should be or could be, that we know. Until we start moving forward and things could happen, things could change. I think from your committee is what you need to do is is really look at what questions you need answered. For your budget.
Or what pieces of information you need from us.
Right, and then or or from whoever.
Are we asking the right, is this a question for select board or is this a question for the moderator?
Well, that's right, that that's what I'm getting to Steve is. Depending on what information you need, you might, you might reach out to the moderator. Uh, you might reach out to Chris Martin, you may wanna reach out to the finance committee. It depends on what. Questions you're looking at answered or what information you you're looking for.
Due dates and deadlines, really. I mean, if we were to say that that. You know, if we were to go solely by the bylaws. That the meeting is on that second Monday, which for this year or coming up is May ninth. If that were the case, there is a calendar somewhere that outlines so many days and times that things need to be done by.
I think some of that is on the schools. Rules and regulations, maybe? I don't know how school finance rules and regulations.
The only thing we're gonna have to follow is to make sure that the warrants are to us in time to approve a warrant to be put on for the town meeting. That's, I mean, as far as the, so for town, the schools may look at their budget, their warrant, which their budget would be, that's what, that's. We need that.
So that's one date, but then there's other things that need to happen, like the warrant, we have to get to you, but before it goes to you, we have to get something in front of Chris. And then in order for us to get something in front of Chris, we have to have something where we've met with FinCom and you. So that that's where like.
So you gotta figure out what those are and reach out to those.
I don't feel like it should be us figuring out when those are because there is dates that are based on, like you like to see stuff. A certain amount of time because it always feels like we know, we find out what the date is. And then we reach out and it's like, oh, well, that deadline was a week ago, why don't I have that? And so that's where, that's where I'm, where the, it feels like the disconnect is.
But it. It it's your budget. But it it is your, it is your budget. And I'm not, and Adam would work with Chris Martin as to, okay, Chris, what, when you need certain figures by? When you need this, when you need that? Then you can always reach out to the the um, finance committee. What do you need from us? When do you need it? And the finance committee is gonna provide you with that information. Well, we're looking for you to give us X, Y and Z, and if we can have it by then, would be great.
So you're answering the question that it's not, it doesn't come from you and then that's, that's really the answer.
No specific date will come from us. Um, so if you're asking just, just.
We don't need to to digest anything else. You're saying no specific date other than the date, the finalized date of. Town meeting will come from you, so we have to go to FinCom and Chris Martin to get all of those other deadlines.
Yes, you also, and I ha- I'm not positive about this, but I think there is something. Regarding your public hearing.
Yeah, it has to be X amount of days.
We don't, we don't need, we don't need the help on that part. We know, we're talking about town side. Expectations from us that are needed, that we don't have a clear delineation of what those dates are. And those dates really shouldn't, the numbers might move, but the dates should never move. Where if town meeting is the second Monday, then the first Saturday in April. Warrants are posted, like there should be a, there, it shouldn't be a guessing game every year as to when stuff is.
But it isn't a guessing game and it shouldn't be.
If it's not a guessing game, where do we go to find those dates? So, do we have a policy on if we have the second uh, Monday of? May is supposed to be the town. Fifteen days before that, we have, or fourteen days before that, we have the warrant. But in order to get the warrant, we have to provide information like fourteen days before then. That's the policy that. I'm trying to.
Okay, I think I understand a little bit more. So I, if you're asking us, in order for you to say for you to get on the warrant, you have to give us that information two weeks prior to us approve. No. I mean, we need, Chris needs time to type it. Um, cut and paste, whatever, what, from what your article is to put it into the list. Does that need to be two weeks prior to that? Not at all. Um, you could probably, and I'm not saying do it because that would be very annoying if you did it the night before we were gonna approve a warrant. There's no legal standard or even. Policy standard that states fourteen days before we set the warrant. You have to give us your information. No, we don't have dates like.
When you typically tried to set the warrant?
We typically, they have to, we have to post them. I, I don't remember.
I remember something about the fourteen days.
Yeah, let's just, let's just say for argument's sake, it's fourteen days.
What, to post the war?
Right, so that will, so that then depends on our meeting schedule. So let's just say, you know, town meeting is the second Monday in May. Um, we have to post it, that would be what the, we'll just say for argument's sake, the third Monday. In April, right? However, we're not meeting that Monday. So we would probably review it and approve it the second Monday. But we we don't know our meeting schedules until then. We know that we always meet the first and third, but if something comes up and we have to switch. So we could say to you, all right, you need to have this to us by the third Monday. In April, but we end up not having that meeting and we prove it the second.
Totally understand that those are very fluid, but I think to our point is we're looking for something like that. So so we know right now. Town meeting is May ninth, it could change, right? Right now it's May ninth, we're gonna plan on that. If you say the articles need to be posted fourteen days in advance and then you guys want them a week. Prior to that, so twenty one days, although that meeting could change, we can plan on getting the articles to Chris. Seven days before that. I think that's kind of, we're just looking for some framework on not the.
I'm saying, so some of that, Adam comes from you talking to Chris, okay, when you need this information by, so I can make sure that. Chris, Chris would make sure that it's on the select board's agenda for a certain meeting. Okay, but Adam, I'm gonna need all this information by this time to make sure I get it on the, of the agenda for the select board to review it.
So you're saying Chris gives those dates to you, not the other way around?
Correct.
He sets our agenda. Um, but as the key finance person, that is. Is.
We can, we go, we technically control the agenda, so what's on, what's on our agenda is on our agenda.
Correct, but we don't know what.
Right, but regardless of your budget and stuff like that, that's why I said this, and I know from years past, there's certain information that Chris needs. Or certain numbers he needs to move forward with something. Cuz, okay, if I, well, Adam, I I need this number by X this time cuz I need to get X, Y and Z done as well. So those are dates, like I said earlier, that you'd have to talk to Chris about, things like that. The other parts, I mean, our next meeting, we we could talk about that and get all the dates that could be.
In February, like if we move that in February, I think we're still in good shape, so maybe a silly question, but. Not to belabor this point anymore, but would that date, whatever it is, fourteen, twenty one, twenty eight days out? That would be the same date for police, fire, highway, everybody, it would be for everybody in town, so.
Some departments, but they vary of the budget all set.
Right, so there's nothing for them to submit, but it would technically be approved at the same meeting. Thank you.
Right, everybody, everything is on at that particular time with the warrants that we're gonna approve. It's your warrant, we're just approving it to put it on for the town meeting.
Okay.
I like, we're gonna say, oh, that went a lot there. Yeah, so it's just, that's. Our authority is to put that on the town meeting. That is just like board's authority to do that.
How far out do you guys schedule your meetings? Just like in February, would you know your May meetings or no, not yet?
Yeah, we always meet the first and third. First Monday and the third Monday. However.
Just like the school committee, you have a pretty much a set schedule, but sometime you go outside that.
Like this one was going on vacation, so you know, we had to switch our week.
Put some more war, right?
Just from something that you just said. Should we have a joint meeting with Chris and you and Celeste Ford or Chris and FinCom or just Chris and all of us?
All the above. I think you should have one with FinCom.
Chris and FinCom?
Them that we don't have the answer to, I think.
We, we know we're definitely gonna have one for FinCom, but it'll be all three. I don't think we're gonna have one with just us and FinCom, I think we're gonna do.
I don't, I I don't think a full meeting is necessary. Um, like a full posted meeting is necessary. I think that's taxing on everybody's time, especially during budget season.
Well, we're, I would try to do it before budget season.
But we are, we are in budget. So the the town, the non-school side of town is already in budget season.
So I know when I had talked to Chris, um, it had to have been. After this most recent town meeting. He said he would get together with department heads, they'd build their budget and then Chris, that department head and John Mabera would sit down. And kind of review that was my understanding and Chris and I had talked about potentially. Us kind of following that same format where it was either me, Chris, John and Steve and Jen, some, some variation. For us to have a similar sit down with John, not the full committee, is obviously they can get, it can go a million different ways. Um, but we did talk about possibly kind of following that same structure. Um, we talked about it, we were way far out, you know, it was right after town meeting, but.
Which I think is a goo- good idea.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, you, you would not be able to follow our timeline. But the structure, I think, would.
Yeah, 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 okay, so I can follow up with Chris um, to see if that's.
That's kind of what I was saying, your, your committee is gonna present that to the finance committee, finance chair. Because they're still gonna look at it and tell you, yes, we think it's appropriate for the town, yes, we're gonna support it. Uh, we don't think this is, this is good or this is, we don't like this or like that, so. You know, maybe you should look at what's your figure here, how'd you get that? Well, that might be too much money. That's, and again, the finance committee is looking, they're looking at the financial situation for the town. Can the town afford this? Is it appropriate for the town to be spending this money at this particular time? Is this, is this good for the town to do that? That's what they're recommending, cuz if not, people could spend whatever you want and the town could be upside down with money.
So that's technically the town could still spend whatever they want. The voters have to say.
Well, that's what I mean, but that's why you have the finance committee present, that the county reviews and says, yes. This is, this is good for the town, the town can survive this, you have X amount of dollars and and free cash, you have this, that's, we think this is a a good budget. No, we think this isn't good because we think it it's too taxing on, I use the word taxing, but it's too taxing on the residents.
You know, there's too much money to be spent, so that's, and it's, like you kind of said, it's the same thing as the other, um, departments do, and they, they look at it, you know. The, the, the police department said, well, yeah, we're, we're looking at, uh, you know, we want all this, the finance committee would say, well, no, that, I don't, that's appropriate. It may not be, you know, you may want that, but I don't, we're not gonna support that, because we don't feel that's appropriate for you to be asking for that, that type of money. Because, again, town's gonna vote whatever, the residents are gonna vote whoever they want, on what they want, and that's, it's an earlier work. A lot of those dates and times, and I can work with the admin, I, I'm on that, liaison to work with Chris and stuff like that, as far as the information and, you know, the go-between is to what you need to make that work and the timeframe to work. So everything is in line, like I said, you may reach out to the, the finance committee, and say, well, yeah, that'd be great, if you can have all the information brought by, I'm just going on a date. April thirtieth, that'd be great, then we can look at it, or whatever, then they can still have a chance, then you'll get their feedback from them. Like anything, we've seen it many times, the, the finance committee will say, we support this, uh, budget, or no, we don't support this budget.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and that's, that carries more weight than the select board, whatever carry, because that, those are the people, the financial minds for the town, that, that's what they've been put on those committees for, is to have the financial, um, responsibility for the town, to let the town know what they feel is the best for town.
All right, do we, um, I'm not really sure where we are. Um, but I think, um, do you guys have any idea of just the FY twenty-three budget outlook at all? Based on, you're just starting budget season, so probably not.
Our revenue is very comparable to what it's been over the years, I mean, obviously our tax base is our tax base. Um, and the other revenue that, that comes in from, you know, other taxes and fees and stuff like that. We don't know till, you know, later on, but I mean, I would suspect that we're gonna have the same type of catch one as we did previous year, with nothing out of ordinary, uh, that I can think of that's gonna have a, a, a big impact, um, what the town has for, for money.
No, we didn't get S R money or anything with COVID, um, money, or was that for last year, not for twenty-three?
No, we do have S, um, COVID S R, I don't, I get them confused as to which one is which, maybe ARPA.
I think it's ARPA's though.
I never understood which one is which. Um, we do have some, it's not a lot at all.
Right, yeah, and I remember seeing that the number was, um, it was under two hundred thousand?
It's low, it's not anything that would impact any of our decisions, really. Um, and we still are trying to figure out what a, what we're allowed to do with it, um, what we need to get done with what we're allowed to do with it. Um, like Glenn said, there's not any real revenue coming in, other than what we've had in past years, we haven't had a sudden windfall, we haven't found that golden goose yet, I'm still looking.
I'll help look. What? I said I'll help look.
You'll help look, okay, I'll share with you, every other day we'll shit, we'll switch.
We haven't found a landfill again, yeah.
No, please don't get that one started.
Well, I just, I mean, so, is, that's one of the things that I would love to see us spend some time on with the joint committees, like we had started that is, you know, what can we do to try to come up with different ways of creating revenue? I mean, you've got a lot of great minds that are sitting on all these committees to try to work together, all the different committees. You know, one mass, big, then planning committee, school committee, select board, FinCom, then kind of try to make some progress on things that we can do to help benefit the town, you know, we're all in this together, right? You've got neighbors that are needs.
I think that's where we were a few years ago, when we kind of talked about whether some of the revenue, different revenue sources that we could bring into town.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I forget, there was one person on the, um, finance committee, I can't remember who it was, but he's talking about something like another town did with, um, what was it, it was like, um, I don't know, for bandwidth or, um, had something, something to do with that, where the town got involved and kind of took it over, and the town sold it to the residents. And they're actually, instead of a different company, and they're actually taking the revenue from it.
So that was like, we had explained it as like, a modern day version of how the, uh, like, we had our own phone company, but it, you know, it wasn't to a private party, it was a town owned.
I mean, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, and there was lots of different ideas that had come out of that, um, you know, but I don't know where any of those notes are. But, you know, it might be time to consider starting something up like that again, getting, you know, planning boards and, you know, all of these elected officials in town together in some way to start brainstorming on some different, I, you know, it shouldn't all be on, um, just a few people, there's a lot of different people.
It's create a think tank.
Yeah.
And the town is actually in the process of hiring a town planner.
Conservation.
So that was, that's gonna be very helpful, and that's kind of what the planner does is, hey, let's look toward the future, what areas of, is available for town? What do you wanna grow, what are some of the areas that you can potentially increase your revenue coming in?
I thought that was FinCom too, that's supposed to be kind of targeting on that too, aren't they? I guess that part of their role is kind of growth mindset of what the town could be doing, or no?
Funding wise, like I said, it's not, it's not the role to figure out other res, resources.
Funding sources, their, their role is to figure out how to be physically responsible with what we, how we currently have. Um, you know, I, we have had in the process of building an economic development committee. Um, that would have been a committee that was focused on how do we build economic resilience, how do we, what can we bring in, what can we change, how do we mitigate? Slow going when we don't have resources, when we don't have infrastructure. Trying to find ways around that to bring in some of these other ideas is what's the challenging part. But like Glenn said, you know, we've got the, we're in the process of hiring a planner. So that will be their job, is to figure these things out for us, and to come to us with these ideas, the town as a whole, like, hey, we could, I see us doing this. And they have a much vast, more, much more vast network than we do of ideas.
It seems, I mean, nice thing, I think it seems throughout town too, over the past, maybe a year or two years, a lot of new homes being built, which definitely helps our tax base.
Lots and lots of new construction.
Yep. Lots, lots of new families moving in.
Yep.
That's the, unfortunately, that's the downside of the new construction, is we have lots and lots of families moving in.
Well, it's a good thing.
We don't.
That is a good part, but we, it, if this keeps happening, we're gonna get, we're gonna bust at the seams.
Wow, as some people say, that's a good problem.
We have one to grow.
We'll have one to grow, and I'll be very happy to be a creative thinker to solve that kind of a problem.
Well, the good problems to have.
You know, we. I'd love to have that problem, but I'd also like to have some business to take the weight off the residents.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And that's where we need to, we need to look at how we take the weight off of everybody. But I don't think that's a discussion for tonight.
No, absolutely not.
Um, that's a rabbit hole.
Yeah, of course, um, I think we've kind of been doing our open discussion throughout, is there anything kind of to wrap it all up here, um, for it? And we'll meet and reach out to try to schedule something either late February, early March for the next, um, joint committee, and we'll include FinCom for that one, I would think, so we'll do all three, and possibly, um, we'll try to set up something, I'll say unofficial with Chris beforehand, um, just to try to get some dates and outlines and things, um, going. Does anyone have anything else that we need to touch on?
No, um, I don't think anything we have to touch on, I mean, I, I wanna say, I won't speak for my two board members, I think I'll echo the sentiments, but, you know, I really do appreciate, and I'm glad that we are able to have these types of discussions. Um, whether we are going to see eye to eye on certain things or not, I do like the ability to just reach out and say, hey, this is what it is. Um, and I don't necessarily want the communication to only be when something has to be conveyed. I think it might, it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to cultivate those relationships. Because there's gonna come a time when we're, we're all gonna not run again for a seat at some point, but we need to be able to turn that relationship over. And I don't think any of these two, either of these boards wanna start from scratch every time this happens.
Well, we should all be in some kind of a staggered pattern, so there shouldn't ever be, you know.
Right, so instead of, you know, instead of having always be chair to chair.
It's, it's, it's difficult.
Two chairs lead, guess what? You've got, you're back at square one.
Right.
You know, if a, a person would think that if any member of the select board feels comfortable reaching out to any member of the school committee, it should be vice versa.
Mm-hmm.
And it should never feel as if it's bothersome or not wanted, or things like that. I want to see the communication flourish.
I love that.
Even if it's just to say hi, like, dude, hey, what's up, caught the meeting, what were you thinking? You know, just the communication piece, it, I don't want, I need something from you. Or, oh god, they want something from us, I don't want that. I don't wanna be the neighbor who's always asking for sugar and never giving you salt back.
Look, if I'm calling, I need something.
Um, okay, so don't answer his calls.
Um, I think that's, um, everything that we've had. First, school committee, I have one quick question about our next meeting for subcommittees. Um, so I don't know if you wanna adjourn, or you guys are welcome to stay and listen to our quick scheduling question.
Well, I'm, I'm interested when your next subcommittee.
Yeah, no, I think you probably wanna do that.
We can sit, we're fine.
So.
So, you had said, is it policy?
Um, evaluation.
Evaluation is meeting.
Well, I'd like policy to meet as part of.
The subcommittee.
The subcommittee, but evaluation committee is meeting at five o'clock that same night, so.
So I think we probably should have, um, the community relations meet again. And I'm not sure what the other, so it would be policy.
It'd be policy and community relations.
Are you good to come on the fourteenth, is it the?
Next Tuesday.
The fourteenth.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so we'll have, we have a very small, at this point, normal agenda, I think, right?
I think, I think so, yeah.
Um, so we'll do, um, those two, so if you could make it Glenn, that would be great, because we've been making some progress there, so.
I'll be here.
Perfect.
So I don't know that right now is the time to have the discussion or make the change, but some feedback I've received was on the subcommittee nights, if we started our subcommittee meetings at six thirty or sixteen, and said we're gonna open up the meeting at seven o'clock, it sounds like we're losing some people when we go off, and then we come back thirty or forty minutes later, so. A suggestion was made that we do the subcommittee meeting, and then we come back at seven or seven fifteen. So then people who are watching know at seven or seven fifteen, the meeting's gonna start, they're gonna have the subcommittee report outs, and then anything else that needs to be done business-wise. So that was a suggestion, um, just wanted to put it out there.
I'm willing to give it a try. So I would say that we'll, um, we have to call the meeting to order, and, um, we can do, just go right into subcommittees from there. We should probably do visitor comment though before.
Sure.
Uh, we break, right?
So, but here's my thought, if they know we're not gonna be on till like seven or seven fifteen. If we have visitor comments ahead of time.
Okay, so we'll just go call the meeting to order, do subcommittees, and I think we'd say, we usually do it about forty-five minutes, so we'll have the meeting start at seven fifteen?
Yep.
Everyone still come for six thirty, we'll have the, um, the, uh. Yeah.
We'll be there at five.
Perfect. All right, is there, um, if there's nothing else, then I think you guys are good to go, and then we will.
Get to the boring stuff.
Yay, do you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that would be adjourned.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll second.
All of them favor?
Bye.